Good morning. Not the bunch, man. I'm on Saturday morning.
Early today.
Not bad, of course.
Brandon, noon's early for you. Don't talk about night.
And I think I heard before we're already live on Channel 2. So don't small talk anything. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
We, I see it's about one, nine oh two. Do we, are we ready to start or what are we waiting for? Other, other council people?
I would figure since we're virtual, we can probably just get started and then folks will kind of sign on as they come along.
Yep. All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Councilwoman Catherine Shields. I'm Chair of the Finance Governance and Public Safety Committee, and I am the Councilwoman at Large from the 4th District. We're here today to have a finance hearing, a public hearing, on the 2022-23 budget of the City of Kansas City, Missouri. I think our colleagues are joining us as remotely. This is a remote event. Anyone who wishes to speak may do so from wherever their location is. We are asking that people keep their comments to one minute because we anticipate it's, we always have large numbers of people at the hearings, but particularly when we're handling these hearings virtually, we have a very large number of the public that wishes to testify and provide their thoughts to us. If, Krista, do you, or Mayor, are you going to lead off with some comments, I believe?
Yes, ma'am. I'll do a, just a very quick, thank you, everybody who has signed on this morning, and thank you for those who are giving comment. We have tried to make it so those of us electeds talk a little less, and we have a chance to hear first from our Budget Officer, Krista Morrison, and then from all of you, your different thoughts on the budget. Usually, we may come back in the end and say a few things, although I know our group usually just wants to make sure we get an impact from you. It's about a $1.9 billion budget, as Krista will go through, but there are a lot of things that we're trying to address, including employee pay and salaries, taking care of basic services, the things you expect from city government. We look forward to hearing from that. I want to let you know that despite any challenges that we've had through the pandemic, our staff has continued to work hard to make sure we can deliver our services to the best of our ability to all of you, and we will continue to work on all of that. Councilwoman Shields will probably cover it at the end, but there are going to be three hearings, two of which are virtual. The hope is that more people can have a chance to participate without fears of COVID or anything of that sort. We will have one hybrid virtual and in-person meeting as well. So we look forward to hearing from you at one of these opportunities, and I'll send it back to you, Councilwoman Shields.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Is our City Manager with us? I know we would like to have a few remarks from him.
And I think that's my fault. I told him he should just be around to answer questions later.
All right, sorry. I didn't get the latest, or I didn't notice the latest changes. Well, then I'm going to turn the program over to our Budget Officer, Krista Morrison, who, along with her staff, has worked very hard on all of this.
Councilwoman, you might just, for the council members here, just let them say a quick hello, I think.
Oh, okay. We can, we can do that. I, I was going to wait till everybody was here, but that's fine. I've already introduced myself. I'll just go in the order I see him on the screen, Mr. O'Neill.
Kevin O'Neill, 1st District at Large.
And Ms. Parkshaw.
Good morning, Rena Parkshaw, 5th District.
And Mr. Barnes.
Good morning, Lee Barnes, 5th District at Large.
And Mr. Bunch.
Eric Bunch, 4th District, in district, and this is my favorite cow painting behind me. The cow doesn't have a name, yet.
The cow doesn't have a name?
No, not yet.
All right, well, maybe we'll do some kind of contest on that. Ms. Lor.
Teresa Lor, 2nd District at Large.
And Mr. Ellington.
Ren Ellington, 3rd District at Large.
Thank you. I, I want to announce, Councilwoman Andrea Boo reached out to me. She actually had, already had a trip planned to visit a college with her son today. And so she's not going to be with us, but I'm sure that she will review this hearing and the testimony so that she is aware of what everyone is, has, the concerns that have been brought forward to us. If there's nothing else, Ms. Morrison, take it away.
All right, well, good morning. Appreciate so many people dialing in today to participate in your public budget process. My name is Krista Morrison. I'm Kansas City's Budget Officer, and this is one of, I think, the most important opportunities that we can hear from our citizens in how you want resources to be allocated in Kansas City's budget. So I'm going to share my screen here. I've got a brief presentation. We really are here today to hear from you. But before we kick it over to public comment, I'll just provide a brief overview of Kansas City's budget, and then we'll kick it over. And anyone wishing to comment today, if you would, just raise your hand. And after this presentation, that is how the City Clerk's Office will, in fact, advance you for your comment. And again, just to reiterate what the Chair said, there will be a 60-second window for comment, and we tend to have very popular meetings here. There are other opportunities. You can reach out to us at omb@kcmo.org. Feel free to send us any questions or comments, and we will answer those. So with that, all right, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll just kick off with a very broad overview of Kansas City, Missouri's fiscal year '23 submitted budget. It is a $1.9 billion budget. The budget is broken out in two major areas. One is governmental activities funds, and that is effectively everything but our business type, which is our aviation and water departments for the city. The governmental activities funds for the city are $1.27 billion. That is an increase from the prior year's budget of $123.4 million, or a 10.8% increase. And the majority of that is because of federal dollars coming through in the American Rescue Plan designated to help communities in, in the impact of COVID-19. And we'll talk more specifically in a slide ahead about how Kansas City is prioritizing those resources for this community. Business-type activity funds is $647.3 million. That is a $50 million increase, or 8.4% increase, from the prior year's budget. Kansas City's budget, submitted budget, is available online at www.kcmo.gov. And just a few highlights here about how Kansas City's budget is structured. There is a transmittal letter that is a letter from our mayor and city manager talking about the highlights of Kansas City's budget. There's a city overview, as well as a budget overview. And then we get into the heart of the budget, which is our program pages. So that will break out each and every department, and each and every program, and how those are funded, and the sources of those fundings. There's also capital and debt overview section of the budget, glossary and fund schedules. So Kansas City's budget, very high level. It is broken out by what we call basically a third, a third, a third, although the American Rescue Plan is deviating that a little bit for us. But the general fund, you hear us talk about most frequently. The general fund is, in fact, what we consider the, the least restrictive of Kansas City's funds. It, it, it's not specified by voter-approved ballot language what the money could be used for, but I do have a slide ahead to talk about what specifically that fund is supporting. The next category, we start to get more restricted from there. Our special revenue, our jet funds, our capital. Some, several examples, examples of these include our fire sales tax funds, our public safety sales tax funds, where, in fact, the voters approved those funds to be used for a very specific purpose. So we start to get more restrictive in each of these funds on what they can be used for. And then business-type activities. This is our water and sewer funds and our aviation funds. And those are restricted, of course, to those particular business-type activities. So a little bit about Kansas City's general fund. And the general fund is primarily supports, our broadest category here, is our public safety departments. You'll see our police department is the largest category at 60, or at 39.9%, followed by our fire department at 25%. And then our other public safety department is municipal court. Our next category here is transfers. You might imagine during the COVID impact, we've had quite a negative response in our economy. We've had to support other funds at a higher level, particularly in the area of travel and tourism. So this is the general fund supporting some of our other funds across the city. And then you'll see categories in here such as our finance and administration. This is our law department, finance department, areas supporting the city, all city services, in fact. So this just is a very, very high-level overview of how Kansas City's budget is broken out by council goal. And then our revenue by type. So this is where the money goes. Over to the right is where the money's coming from in the general fund. And our largest source of revenue for the general fund is, in fact, earnings tax. That is 41.7% of general fund revenue. And this is, just until this year, has been our highest revenue source for the city, and our voters just approved the renewal of that earnings tax in 2021. And then you see the other major categories here in order of utility taxes, property taxes, and so on. So the American Rescue Plan, this is, has changed really the whole budget position for Kansas City. Had it not been for the federal resources Kansas City has received last fiscal year, and this is around $97.4 million last year. This year, your submitted budget includes the allocation of the second tranche of that, the $97.4 million. So had it not been for those resources, we would be looking at a very different budget environment where we would be, in fact, having to, for a third consecutive year, make reductions. So I'm happy to say, as our mayor alluded to, our budget does hold our services, and in fact, we're able to invest in some key strategic investments because of this federal stimulus dollars. Tranche, too, is being prioritized in broad categories, and we'll go through some detail ahead of affordable housing, clean and vibrant neighborhoods, unhoused initiatives, safe and healthy communities, equity. This is both face, or facing internal of the city and our operations, as well as outward to our community services. Revenue recovery, the city has certainly been impacted in many of our major revenue sources by the COVID pandemic. The American Rescue Plan is helping us invest in our own city employees. We have had hiring freezes in the most recent two fiscal years. We have also not increased wages for most of our salary classes. So the budget being submitted, in fact, applies a market study, and one has not been done for over 10 years for the city, to get our city workers to a market-competitive rate of salaries. And it's been over a decade, and, and certainly something Kansas City wants to prioritize it, and is in investing in our employees. They are who's delivering the services. And then finally, we're using the money to invest in city technology infrastructure. So we'll walk through by broad council goals. First is transportation infrastructure. I have a few, just highlights for each of these goals. Specific questions, again, can come to the Budget Office or your council member, and, and, and we have a chat bar as well as this meeting's running to help answer those questions. So transportation and infrastructure, this budget invests in zero fare transit, again, with the KC ATA. It invests in new street sweepers and litter cleanup crews for focused cleanup across the city. This budget invests in Vision Zero. Vision Zero is the city's initiative to look at intersections with high accident rates and start to address those. So there's a dedicated initiative here. The submitted budget begins bulky out of expansion, as well as maintains and invests in equipment for enhanced snow removal. Just coming out of a snow, I had nice clean roads today. I hope you all did, too. So public safety. The investment, this budget creates a new community policing and prevention fund. It adds a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer in the fire department, as well as adding violence prevention funding in our health department. Planning, zoning, and economic development. It adds support staff for review of, in our city planning and development division. So these are the people reviewing plans for development across the city, as well as it continues exploration of the solar farm at KCI. The submitted budget, and because of the American Rescue Plan, has a very heavy focus on neighborhoods, housing, and healthy communities. And there is a second-year investment of $12.5 million in the submitted budget to the Housing Trust Fund. So last year, this city council prioritized $12.5 million to the Housing Trust Fund for affordable housing initiatives. This is the second year. So we'll have a total, if this budget's passed, of $25 million in that fund. This budget funds right to council at $2.5 million. It invests $2 million in building demolition, as well as $1 million in neighborhood nuisance abatement. And the budget submitted maintains current funding for tenant advocacy. The American Rescue Plan also is allowing Kansas City to invest in neighborhoods through a rebuild KC neighborhood grant program. And there are dedicated resources available for grants, and there's information on KC's website of how to apply for those grants. But it is intended to reinvest in Kansas City, Kansas City's communities, and you see these broad categories. Just to name a few, job creation and employment training, energy sustainability and efficiency programs, as well as violence prevention and crime reduction. So you see the full list here, and I definitely encourage you to go to kcmo.gov to learn more about this program. Finance and governance. This budget adds employees to the Civil Rights and Equal Opportunity Department for compliance monitoring. It maintains an office of equal employment opportunity. The budget creates, in our law department, a dedicated team for sunshine requests. It also continues the city's investment in zero emissions municipal fleet. It creates a grant coordinator. And then, again, it invests in city's technology infrastructure, primarily around the area of cybersecurity, as well as some of our main systems we use every day for HR, as well as finance. Our capital improvements plan. Our five-year geo bond plan, if our city manager last year prioritized, an additional $20 million for street resurfacing. One of our, if not our, major citizen priority. So that commitment is for five years of an additional investment. So this is the second year of that additional $20 million investment. It also invests $5 million for sidewalks and $2.5 million for ADA improvements across the city. These are just a few items highlighted in Kansas City's capital plan. We also, our capital improvements plan invests in our city hall garage, as well as necessary improvements in this building. So a little bit about the legislative process. Kansas City's budget was submitted to city council. The city manager's budget was, was February the 10th. So that was just last Thursday? And now we are in the process of public engagement. So today is our first of three public engagement opportunities, two of which will be virtual. Today is our first virtual meeting. The second will be a combination of virtual and in-person. That is an evening meeting. It starts at 6:00 PM. It will be held in city council's chamber, and there will be the, also the option to remote in via Zoom. And then our budget ordinances will be introduced on February the 24th. So that will actually authorize this budget you're being submitted, or at least start the process of this budget you're seeing today, to be approved. And then our, our third and final virtual public hearing will be March 5th, and Kansas City's budget is scheduled to be adopted March 24th. And then this is just a reminder of the opportunities for citizen engagement, all of which have the virtual component. Today's our first meeting. Next meeting, again, is February 23rd from 6:00 to 8:30 PM here at City Hall. And then our, our third meeting is March 5th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. These are all listed on KCMO's website, if you need to reference those, as well as find the links. So that is just a broad-level overview of Kansas City's budget. Now, it is really time to hear your input. Chair, would you like to open it up to public input, or would you like to add a few words from here?
No, let's open it up for public input, and if the city clerk would begin advancing the individuals who are providing virtual testimony to us.
Thank you.
Bike Walk KC.
Good morning. On behalf, my name is Michael Kelly. I'm a resident of the 5th District. On behalf of Bike Walk KC, I'm asking you all to support funding for active transportation in the next budget. This includes dedicated funding for sidewalk repair and ADA improvements, complete streets in Vision Zero and zero fare transit. There are two reasons I want to highlight for why these investments are important. One, this aligns with the federal infrastructure bill, Section 11206 of the IIJA. Makes clear that communities like KC Mo must do more to prioritize walking, rolling, and biking. And second, this will support our broader sustainability goals. Transportation is our largest source of greenhouse gas emissions. We must support active transportation to help lower those emissions. On that second point, I also want to urge the city council to keep the Office of Environmental Quality in the city manager's office. Sustainability is best addressed across departments instead of being siloed. Again, please support funding for active transportation in this year's finalized budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ernesta Calborne.
Good morning. My name is Ernesta Colburn. I am a leader with KC tenants and a resident of the 3rd District. If the city's extra allocated dollars do not address the underlying causes which lead to housing insecurity, eviction, and homelessness, these extra monies are simply a slush fund for landlords, developers, and those who seek to exploit tenants for profit. In my opinion, landlords hold too much power when it comes to displacing individuals just because they refuse to follow laws and rules to keep money in their bank accounts. For example, I had an issue with the landlord for complaining about repairs that needed to be done, simple repairs. Long story short, after complaining for about three weeks, the landlord came to my house and handed me a termination of my lease. They terminated my lease with no warning, no nothing. What's clear to me from this proposed budget is that this city cares more about private property profits, the police that protect those properties and profits, than they care about a human life, and certainly more than they care about tenants. To me...
Amara Khan.
Hi, my name is Amara. I'm a leader with KC tenants, and I'm a resident of the 6th District. I want to say that future planning is getting hard to do. My wages are not rising with rent. I don't know how to financially plan for being priced out of Kansas City. As my, as a resident, I would hope that the Kansas City budget would be like prioritizing me as a resident. However, 38% of the budget is going straight to the police, and that is not what is in my benefit as a black person in Kansas City. The budget claims to protect Kansas City residents by providing comprehensive, high-quality care. But to do these things means to actually put your money where it counts. To not put it to the KCPD, rather, it means to implement the topless of tenant advocacy in a way that allows for fully-staffed operations. It means to acknowledge that preventative care and keeping people in their homes matters to change the ways things are structured. The first step for safer Kansas City is funding the right to counsel in the Office of Tenant Advocacy more than you fund the KCPD. We want to ensure these funds are implemented to have safe, truly accessible, and affordable homes in Kansas City, and every tenant deserves that. Thank you.
Nina.
I'm muted, so.
Still muted.
Here we go. I go, hi, my name is Nina, and I'm in the 4th District. I'm sorry. Affordable housing continues to, to be drowned for the last 20 years by programs that raise property values, economic development, historic preservation, and reducing blight. All raised rents 175% faster than household income from, from an abundance of low-wage work. Emergency rental assistance has afforded four-to-six-week wait period, and at that time, you have to be three months behind on your rent to even apply. A delay in a, and housing has caused families to become a point-in-time stat. We can't continue business as usual. We don't have five years for a plan. Taxing no-speculation properties, 5% to 7% tax on hotels and motels, and...
Jack Nemeth.
Yes, good morning. My name's Jack Nemeth. I'm a volunteer with Sunrise KC. I'm here today to talk about the city's plan to move the Office of Environmental Quality out of the city manager's office. I believe it's incredibly important that this city prioritizes climate action and climate justice in the coming decade, and I believe this move has the potential to... take away from the, to deprioritize the role of the Office of Environmental Quality and City Affairs. We, in order for this whole movement to work, in order for these environmental reforms to really take effect, we have to be able to have good interdepartmental coordination. And I believe that this move does not benefit that goal. So, thank you.
Diane Charity.
Hi, my name is Diane Charity, and I'm a leader with KC tenants and a resident of the 3rd District. I've lived in the 3rd District for almost 60 years. But my American dream has always been to live in a safe, affordable, thriving community in which I do not choose a singular home. Preferably, I'd like to live in cooperative housing. Bottom line, I'm concerned about the Office of Tenant Advocate and the ordinance that was adopted in 2019 prior to COVID. And to know that now it has now been renamed the Tenant Rental Resources, and was wondering who had the authority or right to change its name or mission of the office. Also, even though we're so happy to know that you all have allocated the funding to the Office of Tenant Advocate, I'd like to see it do what it says it's going to do. I'd like to see the mission accomplished of tenant advocacy. They, I'd like to see you all hire, we would like to see you all hire the people that you said you were gonna hire. And I'd like to make.
Leila.
Hello, my name is Leila Zady. I live in the 3rd District, and I'm also a volunteer with Sunrise Movement. I'm speaking today to oppose the move of the Office of the Environmental Quality from the city manager to the Neighborhoods Department. I'm 26 years old, and I've already survived a climate disaster by the skin of my teeth. And I know what it takes to really take true climate action. I believe that if Kansas City wants to hold true to its promises, we have to keep this department in the city manager's office because the charge of OEQ is to oversee and monitor all departments and actions by the city to truly take climate action. This city council declared a climate emergency. And if we want to truly meet our goals to make zero emissions in the next decade in my lifetime, then OEQ must be close to the city manager to ensure that we have the best possible chance to enact swift and strong climate action. The emergency declaration did mention that all developments need, future developments need to consider climate impacts and the impacts on people, which is why we have to keep this office in the city manager's department and not the newly created Neighborhoods Department. We don't have time to.
Javon.
Hi, my name is Javon Swobbs. I'm a leader and organizer with KC tenants, and I am a resident of 3rd District. I'm a single mother of four children. Last year, we were forced out of a home of six years. It wasn't just a home, it was our community. It was our place of refuge. I do have a Section 8 voucher, and it's hard to get a home on Section 8 because a lot of landlords don't accept Section 8 vouchers. I feel like the, in the Office of Tenant Advocate was, if it was fully funded and staffed and operational, I would have had the information to help me go about advocating on behalf of myself and my children. And if the city council members are concerned, as I am, with achieving a fully functioning Office of the Tenant Advocate, then reach out to us here at KC tenants. We want the city to keep the promise of fully operational-staffed, funded OTA with a clear mission statement, policies, and procedures that meets the intent of the tenant's bill of rights. Thank you.
Anita Dixon. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Anita Dixon, and I actually represent all of Kansas City because we got the UNESCO Creative City of Music. So what I'm concerned about right now is after a Google search of the budget, we noticed that music was mentioned once and culture was mentioned once. If you look at the, and within the next week, we do plan on presenting much more information. Many musicians have gathered, and I'm just the first of those speaking out to say that the number one money generator within the world today is culture and creativity. Now, there is so much, we can back this information. We tried to present a four-year report recently, but didn't really get to get into the meat and potatoes. But from here until March 5th, we will be bringing on other musicians from across the world to ask you to support UNESCO within this budget because we've been four years doing this on a shoestring. And it's time that the city stepped up to help us maintain our very vast international image and voice out here.
Don Wallace.
My name is Don Wallace. I live in the 4th District. I'm speaking on behalf of Thomas Hart Benton Group of the Sierra Club Missouri Chapter to express our deep concern about the goal that is summarily stated in a single sentence on page numbered 131 of this proposed budget to move OEQ from the city manager's office to the Neighborhoods Department. The directness of this sentence is undermined by other passages in this document, such as on, such as on page numbered 406, showing only five of the nine full-time positions being transferred from the manager's office to Neighborhoods. We ask the council to reconsider any move of OEQ identified in this proposed budget. We ask the council to delay implementing this objective of changing OEQ's position in the city's administrative structure to allow sufficient time for clarifying for the public a specific plan for the location of OEQ and for considering the possibility of an alternative solution. Thank you.
There are no more that have raised hands, councilwoman.
That's certainly unusual.
There's one, one just came up now, two.
Okay.
I'm getting ready to move them. Eze Redwood.
Have you promoted the person, Ms. Sanders?
Yes, the person has been promoted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, great. So I know many of you, I love a lot of you. And for my finance department, I love you all as well, and I appreciate the initial recommendation for $11 million for supporting entrepreneurs and small businesses who are creating 70% of the net new jobs in the city and helping address the 30% unemployment rate in some of our most dangerous and conflicted areas. You know, I was a little bit dismayed to not see that $11 million reflected in the final budget draft. And I wanted to make sure that wasn't something I was missing. So that's a little bit more of a question than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Mullins.
Good morning. My name is Laura Mullins. I live in the 3rd District. I have a disability, and I'm poor. So I want you to understand the things that keep me safe in this city. The Water Department keeps me safe. Please fund the Water Department, pay the people what they need to be paid. I don't, I think we take it for granted, but I don't. I'm grateful I don't have to buy my water at the store. The Health Department keeps me safe. The Health Department is where I got my COVID testing. It's where I got my booster. It, I know they're available for a lot of things, but in particular, I want you to give them a lot more money for violence prevention because as someone who lives in the city, I see a lot of police cars. They're not around when I feel unsafe. And there's no way you can hire enough police officers to cover every inch of ground, but we can invest a lot of money in violence prevention, which allows us as a community to build the skills we need to build to be better at preventing the need for the police to begin with. So please, I know the mayor said it was a drop in the bucket for violence prevention. Fill that bucket, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanders, are there other individuals who are indicating they wish to speak?
There are none. There are some that are trying to hack, oh, there's one. Mary Kay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mary Kay McGinty. I volunteer with Mothers Out Front Kansas City. And I would like to also express my concern about moving the Office of Environmental Quality out of the city manager's purview. I think that that will not allow the OEQ to oversee the implementation of the climate plan that is being finalized and in which so many residents have given their input, which I applaud the city for updating. And I would also like to see the budget being allocated to implementing the climate plan once it is finalized because there has been a lot of work and input and concerned citizens giving information about what is important to this community to ensure we have a livable future. And without a budget to back that up, the plan will go nowhere. So I appreciate you allowing the public to chime in and give input on how the budget is allocated. Thank you.
Teresa Perry. She's not saying anything, councilwoman. There are none besides her.
Okay. Why don't we then go around and let each councilperson say something? And if then we see that there are other individuals who are indicating that they would like to speak, we might then give an additional opportunity for that. I see Teresa Perry now. Ms. Perry, are you ready to make comments? You need to unmute.
Good morning. I'm sorry, I was talking to a detective. I'm sorry. Good morning. And I just wanted to say, speak up for UNESCO, the music, our international music people. I wanted to speak up for them, see about money being allocated for them. I wanted to speak up for our children of Kansas City. I know you all can't do it all, but I would love to see more places for our babies be able to go. We have different builders throughout the, you know, city, and we just have like two boys and girls clubs. We have one place down north that I'm saying that, you know, children can go to learn STEM and see other things, you know, put in place like theaters and stuff for them to be able to learn. And then I would like to also, we discuss crime. No, we need more help for as mental health, which I think some of that has to come from the state. But also, we need more help in not just getting officers, but possibly more programs, family-funded programs to help get the root of the problem together. So them are the things I would like to see take place. And however I could help, I would like to see even the community be more involved in it. And if it was some type of way we can make it where we can let the community know more things that are going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we?
I don't have any, councilwoman.
All right. Then I think we will turn back. I think I really want to thank all the people who have testified so far today. I think your comments were clear, concise, to the point. We understood the topic and issue you were interested in, and we appreciate that kind of clear, concise testimony. Mr. Mayor, do you, would you like to start? And then we'll go to our council colleagues.
Certainly.
Or do you want to wrap it up?
I'll wrap it up. I'll let everybody talk who hasn't.
Why don't we start by first district? Why don't we start with Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you. Really, I was just here to listen, and I think we got some great input. I want to thank everybody that spoke. I want to assure them that we will be delving into this budget significantly in the next month. So that's all I really have to say is thank you guys very much for participating. It was very, very educational to hear what the needs and wants are of the community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Ms. Lower in the 2nd District.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too just want to thank everybody who got up this morning to get online to talk to us about the city budget. That takes stamina. So, so thank you for your comments. We hear them. We always do. So as we, as Councilman O'Neill said, as we attack this budget, we'll take everything we heard today into consideration. Thank you.
All right. And then 3rd District, let's hear from our in-district colleague first.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for your comments and your commentary, your direction and guidance. This is a draft, and we do need to make sure that we have meaningful public dialogue about this, which you all have provided to help guide and direct us to a final budget in March. So thank you all for your participation this morning.
Okay, Mr. Ellington.
Yeah, I would like to follow suit and thank everybody that actually got on the call. As far as some of the people from the 3rd District, I'm definitely in agreeance with creating more proactive elements around our public safety and even enhancing the Health Department. The OEQ, I've been made aware that recently, I wasn't paying attention to it before, so I will be actually looking at that. And I appreciate the many people that got on the call talking about that just because it shows a community need. And again, following what Councilman O'Neill said, we definitely will be diving into the budget. So I look forward to engaging with any and everyone.
Thank you. My in-district colleague.
I just want to say again, echo what everyone else has said. Thanks to everyone who came here and made their voice heard. And I'm going to follow up with, on some of the questions that were asked, since this isn't always the best place to get a question answered. I do hear some, so going to follow up with you all on some of those. And also just want to thank staff for putting in countless hours to get this budget rolled out. So our, so thank you to our finance and budget staff. Really well done, and look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you. My 5th District colleagues, Ms. Park Shaw.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Again, Raina Park Shaw. Honored to be here today, and I want to also thank the city manager and the finance department for putting together this draft of the budget. Definitely, we want an inclusive public engagement series on this budget. I'm trying to keep up with the chat, and I see there are several people who are concerned maybe that their points weren't heard or because of some of the interruptions that we've had. I want to encourage you all to make sure that you engage via email as well as that as another opportunity. And I know that our clerk and staff are putting in, as it's just saying now, an email that you can also send your comments in if you're concerned that those items didn't resonate. I assure you, I'm taking notes here, and I think my other colleagues are as well. But thank you very much. We will have two other sessions, and we look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Barnes.
Yes, Madam Chair, I want to follow the, and echo the sentiments of my colleagues who spoke previously, and just thank everyone for engaging. This is a two-month-long process in which we will engage the community as much as possible and look forward to that further engagement. Thank you all.
Thank you. And then my 6th District colleague, Mr. McManus.
Yeah, I just also want to say thanks to everybody who came out and appreciate the hard work of staff and our city manager in putting this together and look forward to more input over the coming sessions.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind, before our mayor wraps this up, I'd like to remind everybody that our next budget hearing will be a combination of in-person and virtual. It will be held this coming Wednesday, February 23rd, beginning at 6:00 PM. Those who wish to appear in person may do so at the city council chambers. Those who wish to provide virtual testimony may do the same as happened today. today. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that next Wednesday, February 23rd, 6:00 PM, is the next time for our combined in-person and virtual public hearing on the budget. I'd just like to say before I turn it over to the mayor that I too, like everyone else, appreciate the hard work of our staff in putting this budget together. I know it's been a difficult effort. I also appreciate everyone who has been willing to come on an early Saturday morning and provide testimony and their thoughts and concerns to us. I would like to echo what my colleague, Mr. Ellington, said on the Office of Environmental, I forget what the Q stands for, but our environmental office, I think it makes sense that environmental equality, that it makes sense that we, that we keep that within the Office of the City Manager. We're always talking about silos, and we want to break down the silos at City Hall, and this is clearly an area where literally no additional cost to the city, we can keep this office within the city manager's office. And I think that makes a great deal of sense, and I will be joining with Mr. Ellington and other of my colleagues to promote that change. Again, thank you all for your testimony today. Thank you for attending, and I'll now turn it over to our mayor.
Ms. Shields? I'm sorry, I was just going to, Tammy had put in the chat room just to remind everybody that there will be free parking at Leventon Oak for the next, in, in the council chamber, for the council chambers meeting we're going to be at.
Okay, that's a good note. For anyone who wishes to appear in person at the next public hearing on the budget, which is this coming Wednesday, February 23rd, at 6:00 PM, there will be free parking in the parking lot across the street from City Hall. Do people get tickets and then just probably get them stamped so that they can get out? I'm sure we'll have a process for handling that. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, for bringing that detail to our attention, and now Mayor Lucas.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Shields, and our entire city staff that worked on the budget. As was noted earlier today, many of you driving around Kansas City, the roads are in pretty good shape so far. I know we have more work to do, so we also thank all of our city workers who are still out there right now, making sure the streets are clear, and I think this budget is a document that certainly respects their work more, but we look forward to hearing from you more. We hope you will join us on Wednesday, that there's another opportunity after that. And then I will note, there are also regular committee meetings after that, and so we will keep working. We want to make sure your voice is heard, and so even if you didn't get in comment today or somebody was busy, just make sure you tell them there are these other steps along the way too. So also, thanks to our city clerk. So Councilwoman Shields, everybody, great meeting, and we look forward to seeing you on Wednesday evening.
All right. Thank you all, and again, have a very good and safe weekend. See you all soon. Bye.